There you go.
You sit more, you can run.
Hi.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks for having me.
Yeah, thank you.
Larry, is here?
Huh?
Larry.
Yes, so I'm for it. Good evening, everyone. We'll start with the pledge of religions. Pledge of religions.
Pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reverend Larry?
Thank you for bringing that. Very good. Heavenly Father, we bow this evening with thanksgiving for your goodness to us. We thank you for the Christmas season and the hope that is generated as people come together to care for one another. Thank you for the leaders in this room, for the mayor, for the trustees, for people who are paid, people who are volunteered. I just pray your blessing upon them and their families during this month of December. Lord, we pray for the people in our village, those who are elderly, those who are single parents, those who stand in need tonight, that even decisions made here would somehow bless them in a personal way. Father, I just pray now that you'll give this group wisdom and guidance as they make decisions to benefit the community. And we just pray for your favor, that there'd be businesses and job creation, things that would bless the whole. So bless this meeting tonight, I pray, in Jesus's name. Amen?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Before we get started on anything, I'd like to say first of all that wish everybody Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, because we won't be here until now. We sometimes forget until I get down home and I do again. So I hope everybody has a great holidays and everything. And with that, our first tonight, we have our town assessor Penny is here to give a little talk about senior exemption. Thank you Penny for coming down, I appreciate it.
You're welcome. I might sleep home right after this.
Yes, yes, yes. That's why I put you first, so you can go right back.
Okay, so made a report to go along with everyone. I think we have enough. So basically, the senior exemption is it's a property tax exemption rather than a school tax exemption. We are all familiar with we're all familiar with the school tax exemption, I think the star. So this is something at the village and the town and the county level that's done for low-income seniors. And the town has the option to choose the level of income at which they begin to give a partial property tax exemption. The state allows up to $58,400 in some of the bigger municipalities, some of the bigger cities. $58,400 might be deemed low enough that the town or the city would want to help out. Here locally, Shenango County, Atsico, Delaware, we tend to start lower and maybe max out at less than $30,000. If you make $30,000 or over in your household, you wouldn't be eligible for any exemption. So what I did was give you on page one and two is some of the law. It's the income calculation is different than you would do on your income tax. It's not a federal adjusted gross income or a state adjusted gross. It includes all your income, all of your pension, all of your veterans disability, all of your social security. IRA distributions would not be counted. Inherances would not be counted. But the parameters are a little different than it is for income tax. That's important for people to understand who are applying. You have the option of opting in to this exemption or not giving this exemption at all. You can opt in at any level of income that you like. Currently, I guess I made one fewer copies than I thought I would need. Thanks. Currently, the village gives an all-or-nothing exemption, if I remember right. You start at 12... Is it $12,000, Jody, do you know?
No idea.
Okay, I think it's $12,000. At $12,000, the property owner would not receive any benefit for the village tax. At $11,999, they would receive 50% off their village tax. Currently, the town does something a little different, which is still within the parameter of the law. They do, they start at a 50% exemption and then increase the income level, say from $12,000 all the way up to $18,000 or $19,000. At $18,000 or $19,000, you might only get a 5% exemption. And they do that sliding scale. At the county, I think the level is $10,600 for the lowest income level, and they max out at 16,300. People are talking about increasing these levels this year because of the increases in social security and the skyrocketing inflation and other costs to try to help seniors age in place. I did a calculation that would shows the current cost by my best estimate. We look at this page, the third page in. Currently, there are seven seniors' properties exempt in the village. The current cost in tax to the village is $1,322. If we increased by or if you decided you wanted to increase the benefit by 20%, that would go up to $1,586.75. Levy back onto, let's go to the next page. Levy back onto the village tax and spread out amongst NICEAG and all the residents and all the businesses, everybody that pays village tax. The current cost on a $100,000 property is around a dollar for what we, for what the village has now. I went ahead and I projected a cost that is a little more than triple that. So on a $100,000 property, the property owner would pay an extra $3.2... Well, actually, there's only an extra $2.25 to increase this exemption triple. That was potentially 12 new properties would become eligible. And that would push up the cost to $4,306.90 town or village-wide for that exemption.
That would be for everybody else to absorb that $1,000.
Yes, that would be on the backs of, like I said, NICEAG, the businesses, all the residents, everybody in the village, everybody who pays village tax would pick up that. The last page is what the town had a resolution to do. They went with a sliding scale. They're starting at $12,700. If you're $12,700 or less, you would receive 50% off of your property tax. Income 12,700 to less than 13,900, you would receive 45%. And so on down the scale until you got up to $19,600. Anything over $19,600, you would get no exemption. And on the very last page, there are three different charts. One was what the town was at last year. Then I figured it at plus 10%, plus 20%. They went with the one that is plus 20%. So if you decide you have questions or you like the idea of a sliding scale but you don't want to go with the same one that the town has, I can help you, you know, go through the requirements in the law and come up with a scale that suits you. I think sometimes people end at 25 or 20%. You don't have to go all the way down to 5%, though you can. Actually, that's what the town did. They ended at 20%. But you can go all the way down to 5%. Just add in a few more income levels. This exemption can be redone every year. If you didn't like it, if you decided to raise it this year and you didn't like the result, you could change it back next year. You could leave it the same. When would this actually take effect for the village, though? It would take effect for the village tax 2024. It would be based on, if you decided you want to go ahead and make a resolution, get it over to the county by, say, January or beginning of February, would take effect for the 2023 rule. And that would be the 2024 village tax. So not this bill just coming out, but the next one. Anything I've missed or any questions?
No, okay. We just need to do a public hearing and then we'll see where we go from there.
Okay.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
Penny? Penny, have a question.
So when you were talking about what the average taxpayer was going to pick up, you said it was like $2 and something. That's a total increase under tax? That's not an increase for $100,000?
Exactly. That would be...
That would be the total amount they would pay.
Right. If you had a $100,000 property, it would be $3.
$3.
Yeah.
That's the total...
The increase to the levy is in cents.
Yeah, it's not based on the $100,000.
Yeah.
It's pennies.
Yeah. Pennies for pennies, right?
I was making sure everybody understood how it works.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Nice to meet everyone.
Okay, have a nice holiday. See you.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. We say that, Merry Christmas.
Should I go out the exit or can I go out the way I came? Either way, or you can go down the ramp. Okay. Try that.
Okay. Item number two is public input. If there's anyone here that would... No public, no public input. Okay, moving right on. Item number three is abstracts. Everybody's had a chance to take a look at them. If there's no other discussion, I need a motion to pass them.
I move that we approve the abstracts.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Carry. Item four, department heads. Code, Josh?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Everybody got a report? Any questions with anything?
No, seems pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
And so...
I do want to try to make a statement probably for the public is that we have a lot of contractors out there that don't believe you need a building permit for certain projects. The easiest thing to do is just give me a call. That's it. And there seems to be a lot of shabby work being done out there where they didn't think they needed a permit. So that's about it.
Well, you're right. People need to know that.
Oh, yeah.
But sometimes they think they'll get something cheaper and they'll do it and the job's not going to be what it's supposed to be because you know they're to inspect it.
Yeah.
And it's important to be inspected.
Correct. Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Bill?
Hello?
Hey.
Couple highlights. I don't think I'm asking for anything tonight. On occasion. Couple wastewater sewer-related items. IONI study. Been talking about that for quite some time. The contract came through last month. We have Arald Construction lined up. They'll be out next week to start doing the inspections and cleaning of the sewer system. So it's not going to be the entire village because they reduced the grant that was allotted. But we're going to try to target some of the more problem child areas that we know are closer to streams and deeper and maybe more problematic. So you'll see trucks out next week with folks cleaning and televising the sewers. That information will be used to create a report that will then go to DEC and EFC and be used as a basis to request funding, to make repairs, to reduce our IONI that's coming into the sewer system.
Got a question on that. They're going to send it to with the report that they, with the things that they're doing now. How about the stuff that we did back in 2010? You know, before I'm getting at it.
Yeah.
It'll be, that'll be included with that as well, right?
Yeah, I mean, they...
All those laterals that were bad and all that.
Right, right, right. So Arald's going to do the inspections now and have a list of things that they may find.
Now, okay.
And then they, we also have our historical data over, you know, from past flood events and whatnot. So we compile that data to prevent or provide a summary report of everything that we think are problem areas. And that's the basis to seek potential funding for repairs and lining sewer lines. The, you know, now, when we done past lining projects, Liberty Street after the '96 flood, that was lined. Now there's technology in place that can line the main plus go up the laterals for some footage. And that's often where a lot of the infiltration ends up being is that interconnection between the main and the lateral coming from the house or the business. That seal, you know, if it's not quite right or moves around over time, can let groundwater in. And when you have hundreds of those over the course of the system, that adds up to IONI.
Okay.
So that's in the works. We'll look to get the report in from the next funding cycle with the DEC and EFC. The wastewater plant evaluation, we know that's been an ongoing discussion. We've had some initial meetings. I think that discussion, you know, would look to continue as we look to see what funding is available, what the needs are, what the affordability is for the village. Switching kind of to the other end of the pipe. Couple water projects that are underway. The water project to replace mains in the village are finalizing the plans. Those go to the Health Department this week or this month for their review and sign off. Review with DPW as well. Currywell, the funding that we're looking to utilize, the ARPA funding. We got one bid earlier this fall. It was a fairly high number. Where the board authorized rebidding that project. So we're doing that right now. We have bids requesting to come back in the end of this month so we can review at the January meeting. And we sent that out to six or seven different contractors that do municipal water wells kind of throughout New York State and hoping for a little better feedback. I got different staples this month. The highway garage project, so I guess away from the water stuff, the highway garage project is underway for anybody that hasn't been over there. The building is up largely. Working through a lot of the trim stuff now. But the structure is up. One more. The doors are on, working through sheeting, some of the sofas. And then the work that was authorized at the board meeting last month to do the next, the roof over the next bay of the existing building. I believe that material came in today. So that work will be scheduled. So that's proceeding. We got some stuff to work through with the contractor with some trim stuff and closing the project out. And then we're submitting our first draw to the dormitory authority to get reimbursed the grant that was awarded initially from Senator Metzger. So we appreciate our support.
Thank you.
That's all we got. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wastewater, Shane, John. I will leave you out.
Everybody get my report?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Anybody have any questions?
No, it looks less controversial than so.
Just have one request. And it was a budgeted expense to purchase airlifts for the Seabut Sand Filter Building at a cost of $7,890. And that is 100% DEP.
Make a motion?
Second? All in favor? All in second in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
The only thing we had was that recent release that Shane called. We have not received word back from Fattalis as their findings. On the 30th, they responded saying that they would do an investigation on their end as to what was released. Just turning up, these are the... We passed those down through. This is what they found when I came in and... You can see the milk fat on the tank walls and...
But according to them, there were no spills. Nothing had been reported.
They never responded. Well, they did respond back and said that they would do an investigation on their end, but we never heard back.
That's the second time. Did you have one earlier too?
Yeah. We put out a request. I sent a thing on the 30th. She sent one out. And I asked her if there was an update and we haven't received anything today. So...
We have one on the first.
Yep. There were two. There were two of them this month.
Three altogether.
Yeah. So again, it creates color issues, turbidity issues. You were lucky enough that by running second stage chemical to keep, you know, to try to keep our turbidity within our limit. But...
Well, if you guys noticed it.
It's considerable. Well, that's exactly. You figure it was around 2:00 in the morning, hopefully.
Yeah, sometime in the morning.
We can only estimate when it comes in door, so...
If they're not going to keep not telling us when they have a spill, we're going to have a, this could be being a big problem.
Right, yes. Right. So just want to let you know that we had this issue.
Well, that's something we'll discuss tomorrow.
Yeah. Rather than that, I think just what Shane mentioned is pretty much all we have. That's all I have.
If you guys could just hang out a little bit towards the end because I want to have a little discussion about tomorrow's meeting.
Sure.
About our contract with them. Their contract, not our contract. Their contract.
The airlift's cost?
$7,890. They're, just so you know, the reason they wear out is basically beginning scoured because of sand. It's an airlift, so the sand lifts up through there. It's washed by the clean water top. The sand drops back down in. So it's sand running through a PVC pipe. Even stainless won't hold up. We've had stainless at other facilities, so over a period of time, they wear out.
I need another tour.
Okay. What are you doing at 7:00 tomorrow morning?
You answered that one? Thank you, guys. Bush, DPW, please.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Any questions on the report? Concerns, prayers? Got a few water issues. The one was a two-day event, but we got through it. Other than that, we're gearing up for winter time and been working on the shop. And I'm not asking for anything either.
Yeah, that's a good thing.
10 ton of blacktop, that's a hefty amount.
Yep, it is.
Can you explain to them, the guys that are very on the board, what happened Thursday with the spill down by Fattalis?
Friday.
On Friday?
Yeah, so Friday, we had a plug. Ended up being the Brook Crossing by TAs. I got the phone call Friday morning that the sewer was actually coming out of the main hall, running down. So, but the guys went down and they got our jetter in there and plugged it and unplugged it, about 15-minute deal, so...
But DEC was notified they came down.
Yeah, DEC was notified. He called me Friday afternoon. Said we're in violation for not notifying him, but I had phoned him that I was not at work that day and I wasn't there. I have no idea what it was. I didn't see it. We just took care of it. So, and I was in contact with him today trying to figure out that whole... Because I went to log in today and it doesn't work. So we're trying to get that straightened out now. So hopefully it doesn't happen again. But I've been here 20 years and I've never seen it happen like that before, so it's not, it doesn't happen hardly ever. Okay. So... That's it.
All right. Any other questions for Bush?
No.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Chief said he might be here. He had to take his son to the doctor, so he's running a little late, so... With that, we'll move on to the trustee reports. And this is a, it's stuck with you.
I have nothing to report.
Okay. Nick, you got anything you want to say?
I don't, is that right?
How about you?
Just what was mentioned, that you're making a lot of progress with the garage, adapting to conditions. And so hats go off to our DPW workers. So that's all I wanted to mention tonight.
Okay, thank you.
around village closing time, 4:30-ish, when we close up. And then December 17th, Saturday, from 3 to 9, and December 18th, from 11 to 4. So I'd like to make a motion that we allow them to use the room for those dates and times.
And you got to make sure that the key-
I, I'll make sure they can get in and out, yeah.
Okay.
I'll coordinate that.
You're going to make the motion?
I made the motion, yes, sir.
Okay, anyone want to second it?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Pose. Carrie.
Thank you. So we'll get ahold of Rebecca and let her know that we'll be good for that. Then another one, we are very excited to have Cherish the Ladies back here in Walton for a Christmas show. They're going to be here on a Wednesday evening because they really like us and they decided to come through even though they didn't have any weekends open. They're around, so they're going to be here Wednesday evening, December 14th. We'd like to be able to use the boardroom for expanded dressing room for Cherish the Ladies. They've got a lot of people in their show, dancers, they need a little extra room. So I'd like to make a motion to let them use the boardroom on Wednesday evening, December 14th, for the Cherish the Ladies show.
Need a second on that?
Second. And again, I'll coordinate with Dave Breeze with the Kings.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, pose. Carrie.
Thank you very much. And like I said, there's a lot of stuff coming in. This weekend at the theater, they have the new movie Devotion coming out, looks like a very, a very good newer war movie. I don't know a lot about it, but the previews look good. That's this weekend and this coming Wednesday. Again, we have Cherish the Ladies coming in on December 14th at 7:30 PM. If people haven't seen them, it's exceptionally good, so come on down and you won't be disappointed. Catskill Dance Moves is doing their show Believe on Saturday, December 17th at 6:00 PM and Sunday, December 18th at 2:00 PM. And of course, they'll be in here to change, but you won't see that because you'll see them on stage. So come on out and see Catskill Dance Moves. And then we also have a classic flicks at the theater on Thursday night, December 15th at 7:00 PM, and that is A Christmas Story. You're shooting your eye out, kid. That's it for the theater this month. Austin Lincoln Park is looking very much forward to sleigh riding and ice skating, although we're still waiting on, you know, cold temperatures and snow for those things. So right now, it's still a wonderful place to go enjoy the playgrounds, go walk your dog, please leash your dog and pick up after your dog, enjoy our walking trails. So it's still a very nice time to go enjoy the park, especially since we're having a very warm December and we're hoping for cold weather and snow soon so that we can have sleigh riding and ice skating. And that's it for me, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number six, the major report. I have nothing to do with the report. Things are moving along pretty good with the bowling alley, with other aspects going on, so we'll keep repeating it, but things are moving okay. Number seven, franchise agreement. We need to set a public hearing.
You do.
Yep. If you want to do it, when do you want to do the public hearing? In January? Next meeting?
Next meeting. Next meeting would be great.
No, we're going to have to do one for-
Yeah, we can-
The disc, can we do the two at the same time?
Sure.
Certainly we can.
Safe postage?
Can we?
No, they have to be separate, one, one after the other, you can do two that night.
Yeah, that night, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Back to back.
Okay, yeah, back to back, yeah. Okay, so you're making, you may-
Do I take a motion? Do the two?
Yeah. You want, we'll do a motion to do for the senior exemptions as well?
I will second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
Just a note, our next board meeting is on a Tuesday night, not a Monday night.
It'll be what, the 3rd or something like that?
Yes.
Yep, January 3rd, yep.
The franchise agreements for-
TZK.
Yep.
I was going to say Time One, I'm so used to saying Time One on the Spectrum.
It's still part of Time One.
Yeah, I know.
They have a thing up their mind.
Yeah.
Do we need to have a public hearing on the exemption thing?
Don't we have to have one?
I have no idea.
That's what we do, yeah. Penny said they had it for the town, so we're going to do that.
So that's going to be January 3rd?
3rd.
Thank you.
And that's it. You know, we're just going to go into the executive session, discuss Lactalis' contract. And that's it. Everybody else, thank you and have a nice holiday. Thank you.
Melissa, you want a copy of the Terry Sledge photo?
I actually would, yeah.
You can call it.
You can call it.
Terry, what's up, obviously, you have a memory.